Principal I T S U D Campus, Dr. Somendu Bhattacharya, guests, faculty colleagues, media persons and their students. Good afternoon. It's been 40 years now. I'm the leadership of our mentor, Gauri Vigenary, whose contribution to the academic presidency has been recognized and acknowledged across the country. Our honourable chairman, I T S Education Group, Dr. Arpita Jadasar, has grown from one institute to four campuses, hosting eight institutions, offering undergraduate, postgraduate and doctorate programs with strong industry academia interface and network, excellent infrastructure with a competent group of all education groups, Sri Arpita Jadasar, our chief guest, Dr. Renato Di Castro, yesterday founder, Mr. Bhagwan Kumarli, director of I T, Dr. Srinath Kumarpanesar, Dr. Omang, to take their seats on the dais. India needs smart cities. Eighteen sixty-eight person population is living in rural areas. But this fact does not indicate towards the less importance of urban development. Urban and rural areas are integral part of our nation's landscape. Both ways of life are struggling and demanding for improvement, quality enhancement and determined desperately. Before starting the session, we have tradition of pictures lamp lighting ceremony as a tribute to smart city. Now request all the inventories on the dais to do the lamp lighting before smart city. Thank you, sir. Now request director of I T, Dr. Srinath Kumarpanesar, to welcome our guest, Mr. Bhagwan Kumarli, by presenting him aside.
Mr. Bhagwan Kumarli. And the students here. A very good morning to you all, a very good afternoon, I should say. The program was to go like 2:30 PM, so I will not take much of your time. I'll let the experts talk about smart city concept. We are privileged to have you here, Mr. Renato, for coming especially to I T S, Mr. Bhagwan Kumarli for bringing the concept. It's a very nice concept. Even the prime minister is talking about smart cities and Mr. Renato would be talking to you. It would like a chat which he will be having about smart cities. And I'm sure it would be good for all of us to listen to him. I just hope it's a good session for all of us and we go back learning something which we never knew before. Thank you.
Dr. Srinath Kumarpanesar, to introduce our eminent guests of today's session, Dr. S. G. G.
Under Vice Chairman, I T S Education Group, Sri Arpita Jadasar. The speaker of this session, Renato Di Castro. The other guest of honor, Bhagwan Kumarli. Director of Harvard, Dr. Sapra Areshna, Director of Media Campus of Vidya Shikina. Vice Principal, I T S U D Campus, Dr. Somendu F. F. The faculty colleagues, the delegates and students. To stand before you and introducing a person like Castro, it's something to show life. And then, traveling across the country, sharing his own experience, exposure, views and expertise in the area of smart cities, to improve the quality of life, the living standard and the environment which give us own immigration. But to brief, Mr. Renato Di Castro, he is internationally renowned consultant expert and providing his consulting services advices to create smart cities and first particularly the Indian perspective. Not only the smart cities, but the large part of the population of sixty seventy will be specifically talking about information technology. But definitely something which each of us are related to. So welcome Renato here at I T S. And now I hand over this dais to Dr. S.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Good afternoon. Sir Chairman, thank you very much for receiving me here. Professor Surya, it was a pleasure. We met a few days ago, but we are almost close friends now. That's the good thing about smart cities. Everybody when talk about smart cities, they get excited. Let me do the final adjustments. You're going to stay here, guys? So I want to see you. I want to see my presentation. No, 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 no. It would be a pleasure. So I don't lose track. And I'm so happy because I'm going. They told me I'm going to have it with half an hour. My last presentation. You can see that I like to speak. I have this come since I was a child. My last presentation was last Saturday on TED Talk. Very nice, good experience, lively, but fifteen minutes. You have no idea how I get nervous when I have to speak a few times. And you know, talking about smart cities, it's driving me very exciting. I love smart cities. I'm a very lucky guy. I've been trying. I'm really grateful to see that world is changing. And we are really trying to do something different. But I would like to start the presentation today. By the way, can you put the Facebook there instead of? So you can see people is chatting and talking, talking a lot about smart city aura in India. And what's exactly what I said. I listened to, I saw some criticisms there about how much government is investing in smart cities here in India. So they started with hundred cities, shortlisted for twenty cities, investing, I think, fifteen, twenty million dollars in the first project, in the first round of investments of the project. Smart cities not being done by public governments anywhere in the world. Maybe in the Middle East. Because they don't have people. They have just oil, they have money. The greatest, the biggest, the largest asset India has to do smart cities are people. We have people, we have consumers. So who will drive these smart cities projects in India will be driving, will be the private sector. What we have to do is really to create a safe environment for our international investments. And that's what I work with. So I'm so positive about this smart city project in India because of things. You have a bright future for smart cities. And you that are now studying, you are really, really, really a good time to position yourself if you want to be part of this new world or the last world. It took us almost one billion time to stop having life here. Earth aged more or less 4.5 billion years. Just 3.5 billion years ago. I mean, one year, one history of our planet. So nowadays, we are talking a lot about disruption. Disruption is a fancy word. I remember when I was a child, disruptive was a quality that professors were telling me, that was the disruption, died during school. And believe me, this was really a bad example. I was, it was a seven. My Facebook following my Facebook. And I looked to this video that, can you imagine? It was, I was already in Kuala Lumpur. I saw this really strange video. I had no audio. And the video was shown a piece of meat that was connected to a device. And for me, I swear, I saw it was like a barbecue express device to work with. It was really strange. So, got my nation, I spoke it. I clicked the video and I saw this video.
We're looking at Bosca, the first human modular prototype that is able to live in very safe. As soon to happen is that I'm going to connect the brain to the heart module to activate the blood circulation. Now, the lung is going to start breathing. You can see both organs are cooperating. I can have the kidney module. And if I have the lung module, it start activating the organ here to move. Now it's looking for optimum temperature, which is thirty-seven degrees. If I have another lung, Bosca will recognize it and initiate some good solutions.
That they have already done it. All these, these organs, these mini organs are 3D printed. This is not a new thing. We knew and we are already doing 3D printings of, well, the different parts of, not connected parts, but different parts of our body. And we claim that they got to do the first human body prototype, modular prototype. It's not a matter if they got it or not. It's just a lot of problem due to the migration. But we, I even jumped to this slide because you know better than everybody in the world the problem that we are facing with urban migration. If you don't have the updated numbers, and I'm sure you have because you listen every day about it. For the next study to fifty years, we are experiencing immigration, internal immigration, domestic immigration in India of three hundred million people coming from countryside to the cities. Doesn't matter the side. From now on, I will just call village or city. Village or whatever, village, city, town or city. And cities will be the mega cities we have. Doesn't matter. It's a big problem. Can you imagine adding all this problem with living more time? The graphic before was showing that in nineteen sixteen, we had 1.8 beast without any or very few people, without any movement, without any possibility. So when you talk about smart cities and that, I have an article written just this month, published in Business World Magazine here in India. It was very fortunate to have my article in the magazine, exactly explaining this. Well, maybe solution for India is not just talking about smart cities, but also start discussing. This year got seventy-nine people per hour. We are going to stay here two hours today. So probably one hundred sixty people are arriving then to stay. And then, you see that this is a trend. Even, even old cities like London are attracted. And understand it. Some people are migrating because they are lonely. Some people are migrating because they don't have any, any possibility of living the place they live. But a lot of people are migrating just to have a better life. Young people are migrating to get more opportunities. When I was born in Rio, maybe my reality was just my reality was isolated. Whatever or whoever is now in what we call delandos, they are already connected. They look, if you bring this back them to the village, maybe they will not be afraid because social immigration they already have. They have, they have it online. That's the good thing about online. Everybody have enough of our living a parallel, monopolist life online. Doesn't matter where you live. What need to live is this life there. Some numbers about this problem we have in the urban migration. Need to solve this problem. We don't die because of that traffic congestion. But when it comes to health, according to Lancet, ninety-five percent of the world population in average is sick. It means that in India, we have more than one billion people with at least one kind of disease. And in the world, seven billion, seven billion. Ten percent of these people are kids. Just this year, we had already two hundred million people that died of AIDS. The world is connected. Also, the pandemics are really more constant and faster. We have the bird flu in Asia. And then, two years ago, we had Ebola in Africa. And this year, we have the Zika virus in South America. I was reading The Economist, one research, that this big thing, just five percent of all the money that we are now investing in security here in India. Can we put more schools inside India? We have space for this. We have three areas. How do we not move cities? Solution is not the same matrix that we have been doing for the last hundred years. We need more, we build more. We have more cars, we put more, build more roads. We have space for roads, no. Cities are already, oh, 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 built. And as more we build, the less quality we have. So smart solutions are coming to solve this problem or that they is to try to mitigate this problem. Talking about this, a lot of, a lot of people were commenting. This is disruption. Can you imagine your people not know how to ride? And I got a lot of positive. I tried to be neutral, positive and negative. And there was a guy, he did a very good remark. Saying, look, imagine at the beginning of the century, the car was already a reality. But since when we were a child, we were learning how to ride a horse because we need to ride a horse when we're out. Even when we are a child. So the law could be like this. Okay, you can have a car, but it's too wide to ride a horse. Probably, I had a very long discussion with my wife about this, about our kids at home. My wife, very traditional, traditional. And probably, it's better for me to teach my kids how to swing than how to ride. Because walk is more than a great word. But if my kids write in Italian, if they come to me, they don't do anything. Again, I'm not saying it's right or not. I'm just saying that we are really looking for new solutions that are out of the box, that can bring scalability to solve problems. To solve this problem, we are supposed to build at least in two thousand sixteen, one hundred thousand schools for five hundred kids each school. We cannot, we don't have effort. We don't have resources. And probably, you don't have political orientation to do this. Maybe solution is not this. Maybe solution is not physical. Maybe solution is a mixture between physical solution and also digital solution. I was, I was in the beginning of the year, in January, end of January, I was in Seoul, in Korea, visiting a very nice project called Songdo. First smart city built from scratch that is working, functioning. Seventy thousand people here. Kids are studying. They have video conference in all apartments. All apartments have video conference. In school, they have, they have classes with professors from Hawaii, English classes. You know the kids, the alpha generation, they behave better when they are interacting with a camera. So the school, the teacher is there, talking from Hawaii. They are sitting down watching, having the class, that the class in English. They behave better when they are here in front of a camera than when they have real teacher. Because they know that the camera is three hundred sixty. Someone is controlling them. They are so used to technology. Well, they are getting English sessions after school also at home. Professors are interacting with them after home, after school at home with video conference. Maybe technology is never, will never be the ending. But maybe it's a good means to start solving our problems. So, what's been done? First of all, we have been discussing today a lot about smart city definitions. I was there with the minister now starting the expo in Delhi. And everybody was trying to come with the definition for smart cities. And, well, I'm doing my doctorate now. I have written already two hundred pages just for the return to review for smart cities. And they started basically talking about smart cities in the eighties in the state. And the students like, no, raising their hand. Hello, you really, are you really living the same, in the same, you know, world that we are living? Creative economy, sharing economy are shaping the world. We are changing completely. Uber is a reality. I took a Uber today to come to the, to go to the event. I work in smart cities. So I try my best to try all the mobility in the city. I love the concept of Uber. Disruptive, disruption, it's changing. It started a few years ago. It's the largest world taxi company and it doesn't only one company. Airbnb and a lot of companies to come. Future, they just released, two weeks ago, a news saying that this year, they already come with something. So they will be transmitting energy to my cellphone and we buy this energy that will be in the air. Can you imagine how it will disrupt the whole concept we have, the whole economy? So smart city must be really aligned with this. And again, one part of the sharing.
Consumers, anything like us. In just ten years from now, we'll be buying and influencing buying in ways that will confound you. Who won't just watch your ads, will expect smart tailored content based on our social graphs. Tailored for me, me, me and me. We want to interact with it as we watch it, not just with touch, but with voice, gesture.
With intent. You better embed everything that is featured with additional information. Social APIs and e-commerce functionality. And we mean everything, everything, everything.
The car, the skirt, the hotel, beer.
Because we expect to double tap on anything to get more information. Don't worry, you lost the cost.
Knows about it. You know, the only thing that is wrong with you, you're talking for lunch with a professor that is expert in mobile technologies? Last February, we had the mobile congress in our cities. Twenty-five at home, twenty-five in the city when you go to work. So cars are not solution. Doesn't matter if they are electric, polluting less or they are normal cars. So he wanted disruptive mass transportation. This company called Hypergood came once, a lot of companies, world companies came with solutions. This company came with one that he liked. And he put it together some friends and started investing, he started up. What is the concept? Build a closed environment, a system of tubes, pressurized tubes, put capsules inside and transport the people help to bring us back. And now Melbourne is deciding, is trying to gamify this and put some sensors in the trees. The trees can talk to people and people pass and can interact engaging citizens. A smart cities just work if citizens want it to work. And Melbourne is scouted, listed last year was the best city in the world to live. Maybe I would like to live in a city that people talks to drink. More stupid than it can, it can looks like. To the next one. Thank you. Okay, sit down.
Thank you, sir.
Of you could get the answer, try again. So which is the nearest smart city which is happening here? Any guesses? Indore? Bhopal? Jabalpur? Noida, Delhi? Reddyabad? How many of you think that a smart city should have the waste on the roads? Practice for things like the smart transport, like traffic transition, manholes being opened, the portals being opened, the waste being not collected. So these are all the challenges we have. How do you go for taking this concept of smart city and applying it to Indian context? Where we are still moving from the one, moving from the ones of called smart town to a smart city. In some cases, the towns are like, almost like a smart village. Here, we take it to the next to a smart town. Right? So in the presentation, we're trying to bring it up. Meanwhile, I'll present the concept where we have a smart village, right? Then we have smart town, then we have a smart city, right? So there are various Indian aspects of things, right? We got the, I think there's some of the shit that is happening. All of them I saw in Noida, Reddyabad. Smart app plan planning, there's smart reading, smart communication, smart security, smart grid, clean energy, e-governance, smart education, smart management. So what is the smart cities platform? Please help the vehicle, the result side direction. There's a traffic happening, you got to fight free. Traffic cameras everywhere. And there is a communication network available across, right? The city right, there was a command and control center. I think it's all the movies. I don't know whether you see Bollywood or Hollywood movies. You see the commission of police with intelligence bureau and the hero of course, right? And they're tracking the villain and the drug. They're going through the cars. I'm sure you have seen in Bollywood and Hollywood movies. Yes, no? Yeah? So they took, they took it, sit in the command and control center, but you must see the whole city. Play level four, level five, there are some CCTV cameras. Let's say you have the ability to get into that network, right? And you are in railway station. You're able to get to railway station platform. You are on bus station, then you're able to get a bus. Similarly, take it to the next level where something is moving. Insurance perspective, from a security perspective. From more citizen-centric services, we provide hospital capabilities to provide water, gas and electricity very easily and have control both ways. Second events, not just one direction they're connecting, but also you can disconnect, suspend, get the measurements, set the forecast. And these are under character ambulances from in terms of a reset. So that is smart cities platform. An effective integration of physical, digital and consumer in the very runways to deliver a sustainable, prosperous and inclusive vision for citizens. I quickly go through, these are things which are happening. And one of my startups is part of the smart city governance council that try to create a governance framework in what is happening in India. So in India, we are looking at land record modification program, watershed management, food grain security and subvention management, disaster prediction and recovery, disaster prediction and prevention, groundwater quality, medical service delivery, primarily rural healthcare service, public property self improvements, personal monitoring and divorceancy. There is a type of framework, a classic framework where it is similar to disaster prediction or disaster prevention, where we try to identify, assess, analyze, plan, action and monitor, implement and measure control. Some of those lies predicting, predicting what is going to happen and try to prove. Let's say there is a traffic situation. When you're talking from the thread level one, where you don't want to get stuck into a traffic or get into an accident area. So you see the traffic situation, you try to, when you are doing the directions, you avoid that particular area, move it into the next. So let's say there is a cycle which is going to happen. Let's say there's a chance that there is earthquake and there is tsunami is going to happen, right? So you take it to the next level, like Tornado, let's say the geriatric is stopped in the, in the, in the flight. All these are predictable. Let's say you have that level of productivity, like you have span of a day, an hour, two hours. How do you go about using that information to send it to a person who is located is about to enter the area to prevent you from getting to the area? So that, that's the level of prevention we want to get. You are want to predict and you also want to prevent the person not to get into the area, right? So how do we do it? So, briefly disaster phase, these are the key things we look at, prevention, mitigation, preparedness. And we have the capacity for the handle across India. And we have to be 24/7. And poor disaster, this is the more proactive in which most of the time happens. So we have to worry about that. We have to have a prompt and efficient response, reconstruction, recovery, disaster prevention, prediction and verification of disasters, disaster control mechanism, disaster relief and plan control of any possible accident of a disaster. This is the digital India initiative which we are looking at like land record modification, land record history, citizen setting services, I T history. land record history, citizen-centric services, IT history, somebody checks land record history, land record history. So this is the one concept which I was telling you about a smart village. Most of the time, we talked about smart city or smart, a smart village will consist of institutions. Will consist of village, village pancharies, regulations, state governments, we have infuse. From a transportation perspective, we have bus, electric, IT, mobile networks. We have food courts, we have e-kiosks, post office based services like online booking, retail, document warehouse in the marketing. And from resources perspective, we worry about land resources, land reports, water energy, health, health reports, human resources, financial resources. At the bottom, we have all the citizen-centric services, education, retail, water, rural employment, farming and squalling for this. This is just an example which I want to present, recently I was in Andhra Pradesh. CM Chandra Bhagwati presented this approach for the whole smart cities where you want to take the whole state as an incubator for smart cities. And you want to run Andhra Pradesh as a state government like company, which will become one million dollars. Guess who is investing in this initiative? Any guesses? To make Andhra Pradesh one million dollar company? Any guess who is going to invest? Companies? Any ideas? He is actually going to citizens directly, like farmers, and they're going to invest the land in his promising four X and five X. So it's almost like investment right from the scratch, zero, take it to the level where the citizens, the farmers pull in land and money. And he is promising on four X to five X of eight years for the state running the company. And he's treating that whole state as an incubator. So I'll present that as an example because I was there. So, in a smart village, we have level one village, without connecting infrastructure, like all areas, where you have free water, energy, waste and others. There is technology enablement, green related. Level two is ready infrastructure, right? To take level one, really surprised, right? We see a lot of things happening in Dubai, but when you really go there, you actually see a smart city solution really happening. And I was particularly surprised as a citizen that Dubai is already in the level of smart city. They're measuring satisfaction, the client satisfaction index, how people feel about this smart city. So I just wanted to share this demo. Like for example, in the case of coastal zone monitoring, you can actually have the light cameras, feeds. So, Monday to Wednesday, time now, experiments can see how Dubai transforms. Similarly, you have the light cameras where you can see the actual traffic in the various areas. This is the coastal. Have flight information, weather and so on. So this was my first attempt, more or less a general perspective presenting demo. There are a lot of award submissions where there are IoT clouds, where you have devices like smart buildings, smart home, like for example, the Ministry of Communication and Information Technology, this comes from the Department of Dilco. Because we're all interested in participating at India level to make this smart city or smart village, smart town successful. Be free to send in your ideas to make your country successful. Thank you.
And with thanks to all of us. Now, with this, honorable vice chair of IT's Education Group, Shere Kichalasa, to present a moment to Mr. Rayatul Khanshu as a token of remembrance. Thank you sir. Now, with this, Director, I should have to speak, Mahatma Nishan, to present a moment to Mr. Bhagwan Kumari as a token of remembrance. Thank you sir. Now, with this, Dr. Maham, to deliver a vote of thanks.
Delegates, media representatives, faculty members and my dear students. From the outset, I, on behalf of Organizing Team and Department of IT, I T S Mohanakar Gajabath, express my deep sense of regard to eminent guests for accepting our invitation despite of their busy and busy schedule. And raise this ambitious event by sharing their views, vision from today to future. Also giving us an excellent coverage to the concept of smart cities and smart villages. I also wish to express my gratitude to Mr. Bhagwan Kumari, Group CDO, Horizon Technologies and founder, architect Korn, for spending time and being with us in this session with his wonderful tower. Finally, thanks to the person under whose able guidance, mentorship and encouragement we have been able to support us to organize this event on a very short notice and providing the support and guidance whenever it was required. We are also thankful to the participated delegates, faculties and students to make this event a grand success. We look forward to your contribution with us today. Thank you.
Oh, thank you ma'am.